All right, it is seven o'clock. We're going to open the public meetings. Our first matter is 50 Hunt Road, determination of a minor or major modification to a previously approved project, change of roof line.
Good evening, welcome to the board. For the record, my name's Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of DeShane &amp; Farrell. We're here for Beaver Brook Crossing LLC. And I know there's a couple of new faces on the board, so I'll tell you that this project was approved in 2017. It is a rental project. It has 84 units. There are three different structures. This was the structure that was approved. This is the four-story building. There's also two, three-story buildings. It's a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. So the way a modification works is I come to this board and I ask for a change, and this board has to determine whether or not it's major or minor. And then if they determine it's minor, then this board can make the decision tonight, and then I can go about my way through the decision. If this board determines that it's a major change, then I have to notice a public hearing and then come back during the public hearing to ask for the change. This change is just to the roof line. During the public hearing process originally, there was a lot of discussion about the fourth floor and how we could set it off and maybe try to disguise that fourth floor. And there was another, there's other projects in town, actually right down the street here, that have these mansard roofs. So we thought we would pull this mansard roof design into this project, and that's the way that it was approved, the mansard roof. We've actually hired a new architect, Jim Zegowitz. Sorry, they're both Jim, so I didn't want to say the wrong last name, so Jim Zegowitz from MZO Group. And he came up with a great new design for the fourth floor and the third floor on the smaller building. As you can see, it takes away that mansard roof, but it's actually just building the fourth floor into the roof line itself. So it's really a big C of roof. This actually takes that all off. It goes into a flat roof, but you can't tell it's a flat roof from the design because you can see it has articulating fronts. It also has some design features that break up the building. We're also going to use a different color for that top floor, this light beige color, because it really sets it off at the horizontal, so that you can see a more contemporary design. It really blends more into the area. We're still going to use the different types of siding on the front. We still have the brick base. It's the same exact number of units, same design and layout, and we still have to come back to this board with our final architectural plans and design. Once we actually go to full design, what happens is we submit everything to the building inspector and to Abbott and to this board, and they'll go through the plans and make sure we're in performance with the decision, and then we can get a building permit. You know, my original discussions with your planning staff, I didn't know if this even rose to a level of a change to the project. But we are going to go through full design. So what I didn't want to happen is that Mr. Emanuel go through full design for an architectural plan, and we get here, and the board say, "I love that mansard roof. I can't believe you took it off. We think this is a major change. We're not going to allow it." So in an abundance of caution, I'm here tonight asking the board for a minor change to allow for the change in the roof line only, to allow the removal of the mansard roof to this new contemporary design. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Melissa, is this shorter than the original one?
It is. Yes, it is. And we won't know, we haven't fully designed the floor plans out, but it is shorter than the original roof, the original roof line. And the original, the plan as it shows right now is almost 10 feet shorter. I mean, I'm saying it will be when it's fully designed out, but it's absolutely shorter.
Then the neighbors should really appreciate lowering it like that.
Right.
That's a good time.
Right. Well, I think from a view shed, this is a much nicer roof line to look at anyway. I mean, when you really look at that mansard roof and the impact it'll have in this area, I think this is a much nicer design and pleasing better to that area.
Any questions, ladies? I'll open this up to the audience if anyone has an opinion, therefore against this project. Now is a good time? Seeing none, I think we can, if we don't have any letters, we can close the public hearing.
This is not a public hearing.
Oh, this is not a public hearing?
Nope, it's just a determination of major or minor. We just need to take a vote.
I would say it's definitely a minor, a minor modification.
I motion to, to vote as this being approved as a minor modification.
Second?
Second.
General, or favor?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
It's minor.
Thank you.
It's good, it's best.
Yeah. Keep it.
So it not being a public hearing, testimony from the chairman.
You could always open it up as the chair. You can ask anybody.
Because people have an opinion.
But nobody has notification to come.
I think it looks fabulous. I think it's going to be a great improvement over the mansard. Our next hearing is continued public hearing, Nine Rogers Road, estate of Phyllis Clark, for a variance under section 195.9 of the Chelmsford zoning bylaws, conformity for lot area. Good evening.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Greg Hallidah, and I represent the applicant, the estate of Phyllis Clark. And I'm here with a couple of the children of the late Mrs. Clark, one of whom is Alan Clark, the personal representative of Mrs. Clark's estate. The property here is Nine Rogers Road, which is a vacant parcel of 10,463 square feet. It's been in the Clark family for 65 years, and in 1953, my client's grandmother, Leader Clark, acquired the lot, which was then buildable. And it was protected from zoning increases, as it was a separate lot, through the years. And in the early '60s, the zoning requirements for area and setbacks reached the current levels they are today, but the lot was protected as a grandfathered lot. In 1972, Leader Clark, my client's grandmother, transferred what was then a buildable lot to her son and daughter-in-law, Bernard and Phyllis Clark. Now, by then, Mr. and Mrs. Clark had lived for 22 years at the neighboring lot to the left, 11 Sharon Ave, where they had built their home. Bernard Clark died in 1997. Phyllis Clark died in 2016. Their home on the adjacent lot, 11 Sharon, has been sold. So now what we're left with is this Nine Rogers Road parcel before you. That's the subject of tonight's hearing. It's a separate lot, and last year, the building inspector denied a building permit application we submitted, based upon town council's opinion that Nine Rogers Road, for zoning purposes, had merged with the neighboring home at 11 Sharon Ave, because they were in common ownership for a time. Now, even though 11 Sharon Ave now has been sold, and this Nine Rogers Road isolated lot is no longer in common ownership with any other lot, town council said it was no longer grandfathered. Now, the family has accepted town council's opinion, which was supported by this board at the meeting last month. At the last meeting, though, town council had said the only way this lot can become buildable is with a variance, because it's no longer grandfathered, and that's why we're here. Now, Nine Rogers Road is a separate lot, has always had its own separate chain of title over the last seven decades. It's been separately assessed as an individual lot by the town. The Clark family has paid the taxes over all these years to the town. There have been issued separate tax bills for this lot. There was never an abatement application submitted. Taxes were paid. It was even assessed its own sewer benefit, which was paid in full by the Clark family. And in fact, in the 1980s, when the sewer was installed, Mr. Clark got a building permit to prepare the lot for building by removing some of the fill from the sewer excavation towards the rear of the lot, where it had sloped off. It's just beyond dispute that the intent of the family all along has been for this to remain a separate, isolated, buildable lot. But because of a period of common ownership, which is not even the case any longer, we've lost our grandfathered status. Bernard and Phyllis Clark, my client's parents, they were not real estate savvy, and they were not speculators. Bernard was a foundry worker, and Phyllis was a Chelmsford schoolteacher. They were completely unaware that they were giving up the grandfathered status of the lots by having their names on the title to both of these separate lots. It's obviously a substantial hardship. There's a complete loss of the use of this lot. It's been rendered worthless, all because of an honest, innocent, and inadvertent action by Phyllis and Bernard Clark, taking title in the same names for some period of time. And the hardship is unique to this lot. It's the only lot that has this problem in the area. This is not something that affects the entire zoning district. An variance would not be a detriment to the public good, not setting a precedent here by someone trying to create a lot, spinning off something that's undersized and asking for a relief from the board. It would provide for an affordable home for a family in the town of Chelmsford. It would increase the tax base in the town of Chelmsford. Now, we've been before this board before on the issue of the grandfathering, and some neighbors had concerns about drainage towards the rear, where it slopes off. Those concerns, as stated by the neighbors, would not even be addressed unless this becomes a buildable lot. The fact is, it's a separate lot that just will remain worthless, and nothing will happen to the issues that the neighbors may raise unless a variance is granted and becomes buildable. A literal enforcement of the bylaw in this case would be an injustice, in our opinion. The ZBA has the right and the authority, and I would submit has the duty, to correct this inequitable situation by granting a variance. This is a unique case. I would analogize it to a situation where you have a house built, and perhaps an inadvertent mistake by surveyor locates the house maybe a foot too close to the side yard. I personally handle cases like that, where you come in for relief from the zoning bylaws because of an inadvertent, honest mistake that was made. And of course, if a board was presented with a situation like that, you would consider granting relief. In this situation, we don't view it as any different than that. You have an honest inadvertent action or mistake taken by the Clark's parents back in the '70s, which resulted in a complete loss of the lot. We respectfully appealed the building inspector's decision not to grant the building permit due to town council's opinion that we were not grandfathered. But last month, town council did tell this board that the only way this can become a buildable lot is through a variance. It's the only way this injustice and inequitable situation can be corrected, and that's why we're asking for a relief tonight. I have Alan Clark here, who has some renderings of the house that we proposed to construct if the board were to see fit to grant a variance, and Mr. Clark wants to show you those.
So I know we have some new board members here, and I'm not going to, not going to go through just what was explained, other than, my name is Alan Clark. I'm the oldest child of my parents, and unfortunately have the responsibility as the personal representative of trying to liquidate the estate, which I've completed with the exception of this, of this lot. As was stated, this, this lot goes back. It's always been a lot. It was the intention of my parents that one of their children would build on it. That hadn't, hadn't happened. There was a period of time, and the law changed in 1975, and effectively merged the lot for zoning reasons, the legislators, in their wisdom, said this is going to create a significant hardship, because if they own it in the same title, titled in the same name, and in my, in this case, it was in my mother and father's name, same as their house, that it would merge. So the legislations, legislators were wise enough to recognize that that would be a hardship, and they gave a five-year period where you could correct this by, by simply deeding it into a different entity that they didn't control, or in this particular case, they could have deeded it to, to one of their children, provided they were of age. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I was of age at that time. So they could have deeded it to me, and we wouldn't be here tonight, because then it would, that would have retained the grandfathering of that lot as a buildable lot. My father was, worked in a foundry. My mother was a schoolteacher for well over 30 years in Chelmsford. They were not real estate savvy. They obviously had no knowledge of this. I had, I had left home and moved away, and had my own business, and was not aware of any of this taking place. My brother and my sister at that time were relatively, relatively young. So through an error, had, had they simply deeded that, probably to me at that time, because I was of legal age, we wouldn't be here. The lot is a separate legal lot. It's been a legal lot, a separate lot, since 1946. Regardless of your decision today, it's going to be a lot. So you're not, you're not creating a lot. You're, you're simply, what we're asking for is relief from the, the error that my parents made by not deeding it into a different name, so that it could be sold as a, as a buildable lot. It was mentioned that when sewer went through, there was a sewer hookup there. My father got a building permit to, to have fill that actually came from that sewer project based on this lot, so that, so that, to prepare it to be built on. We've paid taxes on this lot for almost 70 years. The reason why we're here is simply we're not, we're not real estate speculators. We're simply trying to, to liquidate the estate. There was some concern about the drainage, and this is an example of a home that would fit onto this site. And the reason why I wanted to show this is because this, this lot slopes from Rogers Road down significantly to where your butter's land is. And there used to be a brook that we used to run through that, and then when Crystal Lake Dam let go, for whatever reason, that brook disappeared, and that used to handle some of the drainage. So this allows us to actually remove some of the fill that would, that my father had put in there. It allows us to have a garage under, unlike what's shown, but it allows the entire lower level would be at grade. And so we're not, we wouldn't be filling in. We would be taking out fill, and it would give us adequate room in the back to be able to address the drainage, which we'd like to do. So again, I mean, the purpose, the purpose of the ZBA is, is to provide equitable relief. We don't, we don't deny that it merged, it did. No different than, I guess, people make mistakes when they build too close to the lot line and, and miss the setback. In this particular case, if prior to 1981, after 1975, if they, my parents simply deeded that lot to a different individual, we wouldn't be here. That lot would be possessed, and it would have been sold, and the house would be built on it. And I just want to say that, you know, it's a vacant lot now. People dump on it, and this would be an opportunity to, to improve that neighborhood, raise the values in the, in the area, correct the drainage that exists, and really, a family that's lived in Chelmsford for almost 100 years, to, to do the right thing. And so my family requests that the board grant this variance, to correct the error made by, by my parents, and do the, and provide equitable relief. I thank the board.
Thank you. Can I ask you, at, at home, you have there, it does not appear to me to be 60 by 28, significantly less.
That's significant. That particular house is 28 by 36.
28 by 36. So if we were doing a little math, and put a, an envelope of 26 by 36 there, your side lot would probably become acceptable at 25 feet. The radius one is a little more difficult to calculate.
I have a proposed, new proposed block plan.
Oh, I think I'd present that. That'll be fine.
Root block. Laying out the side setbacks. I only have the one copy that the side setbacks would meet in the front side, which would be 33.
So there's no real lot here. These are both sides.
Both side lots was determined, yes.
So we would have a setback on the sides, not on the front.
Would the front still be 26?
The front would grow to 33. I pass it on. So that would grow to 33, which is a lot closer to 40 than 26.
26.
And both side setbacks would become acceptable.
And I'd point out that all of the other houses don't have that large of a front setback, because they were built, they were built 50, 60 years.
Yeah, right. It's a 10,000 square foot lot. The setbacks are much, or less, or less. I think it was one of the smaller lots, but not terribly smaller.
This, this lot's a little more than 10,000 square.
So an option we would have is to allow a smaller structure than the most shown here, and we can set the footprint of a similar one to that, but we can have an envelope that that is a size they could put it, as opposed to what's there, which really looks of a lot to put on that area there.
Is the shape of the lot a hardship in this instance? Because it's curved, it's not like a square lot. It has two sides.
You certainly can consider that, yeah.
I mean, it has two sides.
And it's, lot shape is definitely a factor of hardship.
Yeah, like the way they measure, because it's curved in the front, right? It's not like square. So I'm wondering if that affects the way that it's measured, and if that kind of could be a, a basis curve.
At end, the slope, the topography, the slope in the rear causes the front yard setback issue, where you're, we can make it 33, which is obviously closer to 40 than we were originally, but that's also the hardship, laying into that slope off in the back. That's why we have it closer to the, to the front.
Like if it was a square lot, there would be more frontage, right? Because it's not square than the, there's a slope in the back.
If we push the house back further, then we get back into the area where we need to correct the drainage, so we.
You feel you're as far back as you can save.
Yeah, we've tried to respect that as much as we can, but we pick up the drainage, the drainage is going to be in the back of that house, and we need some room to be able to do that. We're very sympathetic.
Is there a system or a public to?
Sympathetic to do our butt-.
I think, I think, let's see, are there conservation issues back there? Is that a drainage ditch, or is it a, considered a stream?
No, there wasn't, never was, on the, well, on the 1984 map.
We could probably go and do an overlay here, call in a magician and.
This is, that's town water resources, and nothing is showing up.
It's not a, it's not a wetland. It's not in the flood zone. That used to be a gravel pit.
There's the, there's the wetland showing, so it's nothing there.
Are there any further questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll open this up to a public comment. In favor or in opposition to this?
Hi, good evening. My name is Charles LaRosa. I live at 60 Denton Road. Yes, thank you. This is my property while I'm standing here. I have three or four main points with the drainage issue and stream issue. The stream didn't disappear. The stream was covered up when they put the fill there from the sewer stuff. There is a stream, was a stream, that's still half there, going down. So that's been covered from that. Nobody, again, with all due respect to the family, no one is questioning the fact that it's a lot. It is a lot. The question is that it's a buildable lot. I don't think the building inspector said it wasn't a buildable lot because of another committee's decision. It was deemed a non-buildable lot, because it's not a buildable lot. With the whole situation, I don't know where to stand, so everyone can see, that starts sloping right about there, on that land. So this is actually what you're looking at to build on. We really can't count this, because that's a tremendous slope.
I just wanted to see the gradient.
My last point, I wish I could go back and change laws and change decisions that my parents made that were not right ones. Unfortunately, I can't do that. I completely understand the hardship situation. It's not a buildable lot. I can't just go back and change laws because my parents made bad decisions. So that's all I have to say. Again, sorry, Clark family. Thank you. Thank you, board.
Thank you. May I respond? How much from the audience this evening? Seeing none?
So the decision of the building inspector was not on the basis of the topography or the, we've already determined there's no wetlands on, on this lot. I respectfully disagree that, that the, that the fill went up into where the, where the brook goes, but we, you know, have demonstrated how, how this lot can be built upon. The, the building inspector's decision was based upon the fact that town council indicated that the lot verged, and as a, as a result, for zoning purposes, it wasn't, it wasn't a lot. He didn't do any analysis at all whether or not it's capable of being built upon. And, and I mean, we can demonstrate that it certainly can be, and if, we, we're also trying to demonstrate that we can, we can address the drainage issues if we're given a build.
I don't know if, you guys are familiar with this? I've done by and see the lot. If not, would you like an opportunity to do that?
Yes, I would. I did not get a chance to.
I think at this point, if we're going to consider a smaller lot there, it would be a good idea to get a, a good visual. I don't want to see you guys spend additional money you don't need to. I don't think I'd require a surveyor, but if you could stake out the corners of hypothetical 26 or 24 by 36-inch foundation, just so we could take a look at it.
We can mark the corners as well.
We could, we could do it, it seems best this time of year, when it's being dark so early, if you want to go by and look at it before the next meeting, rather than have an official walk around, you can just go see it. With your permission, enter the property.
Absolutely.
I think that would be, you know, a good idea to get a visual of whether a house fits, or whether you're looking, it just isn't, it's, one, this is a deceptive drawing with a larger house, but I think you really need to see it and say, if this would fit or not, is it, is it a good idea? Have you been able to see?
I've been able, like, half dozen times in a row.
Yeah, I've tripped it too myself.
I do have a proposed topo map also, if that might help for you tonight.
I think I'd be fine to, to look at. I, I think, I just want to make sure you guys understand what we're looking at here. There's some information on the internet that you should look at, and if you're comfortable with that, that's fine.
So, yeah, so as you can see, on, basically, this 120 line cuts across.
It appears to be the lowest point.
Yeah, that point. So there's, there's like a 10-foot drop, but, but we did fill in quite a bit of this area before it was more of a gradual drop, but now it kind of matches the grades going around the other side. So I did have a proposed topo map. I had the topo map from when, before it was filmed, but. Here's the 120.
The top of the, top front part of the home is at 128. Rear of the home is at 122, so it's about a six, a six-foot change.
Yeah.
And then down to the low point, which actually leaves the property, appears to be 116.
Yeah, it looks like, you know, at the property line, yeah.
It's almost steeper from here to here than it is from here to.
Right, that's, yeah, that's what we're proposing, is that it will level off when it gets closer to the lot line. Right now, you know, it's a, it's a steep hill, but when it's all done, that will be like a level backyard, maybe a foot or two higher than what the backyard is.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, if, if the board does see its way to making it a, a buildable lot, with the issuance of a building permit, they are required to maintain all runoff on their own property.
On, on the property. They, they, engineering would look at that, I believe.
So, I mean, we would be looking at that with the issuance of a building permit, that any runoff does have to remain onto their property. So I just want just to be aware of, of that situation.
Thank you. So I'm going to suggest we continue this one, one more, I hope, meeting, and let everybody have a look at this that hasn't been involved, where we've had a bit of time in front of the board, and I, you know, I wish you could move faster, but we really have to get this right. That being said, if I could get a motion to continue?
Motion to continue, Nine Rogers Road, to the next meeting, or seven.
Second? Oh, favor?
Thank you.
And if you could, it doesn't have to be, you know, stakes or orange or.
I had spray, I had spray painted it out there, but that was a while ago, so we'll have to probably put some stakes.
Yeah, just something to mark at the four corners would be really helpful.
And we'll, and we'll show you where the lot line is up to.
Thank you. That would be great.
Thank you.
Do you want to, the proposed?
Yes, for the file.
Let me see, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess it's showing the distance thrown in on there, too. I thought I had another one that didn't show that, but, but he, he has the one that shows just this lot, so.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe with a agenda for next month, and you just put a notation to visit the site if you have it.
Okay.
Just a reminder.
Absolutely.
Our next hearing is a new public hearing. 15 Radcliffe Road, Kenneth Coleman, for special permit under 195AE2, to construct a 30 by 42 addition, with a four-foot porch to a pre-existing non-conforming structure, frontage and side setback, which will now. Frontage and side setback, which will now create a non-conformity on the right side setback requirement, and is over the thirty percent allowable by right and any other relief deemed necessary. Good evening.
Good evening, Ken Coleman, fifteen Radcliffe Road. Here before the board to seek a special permit to construct a nine hundred square foot addition in my house. On the right-hand side of my house, I'm within about fifteen feet of my neighbor's house. I guess that's not to today's standards.
You're within fifteen feet of the lot?
I'm having a close look.
The lot line, you're fifty feet from the lot line.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the lot line right here. It's actually twelve feet. So this is actually a, we had this survey.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forget that it's up there.
And that's the actual addition, size of addition right now, put on that plot plan, and, and that's, that's the problem is right there. So I'm speaking, I'm seeking a special permit to, to go ahead with this nine hundred square foot addition.
What is the space gonna be used for?
It's gonna be for my, my, my in-laws coming up to live with us, we're gonna put a bedroom in a, in a front room for.
There's not gonna be an in-law?
No, there's not, there was only one kitchen, the kitchen separates both houses itself.
Yeah.
She's an elderly lady that's sick.
So it's, it's really not the kitchen anywhere, Sean, it's pretty, it's the.
You can add as many kitchens in a couple of years.
Yeah. We're gonna get the wrong place again. That's a big yes, I do, but it's not one of those.
The way the house sit, the way the, the structure sits on the, on the lot now, we have that problem on either side of the, the lot. So we just felt as though on this side it would be the best for us.
Yeah, I don't think it would improve your setback at all anyway, it's just, it's a difficult, the shape of the lot is difficult.
It doesn't work to go like into the backyard.
Yeah, so it's like coming off the corner of the hill.
And would that not be conducive?
I mean, I don't know what the layout of your home is, so.
Yeah, we sort of wanted the kitchen to be the, the cutoff between the two places right there. Basically come out of the kitchen and go right into, this would be her front room right here. It's basically just a front room out here, and then her bathroom, bedroom, and, and a, and a closet back here, so just something so we could split up right here.
She has a quiet room, she has an old suite there.
She has a quiet room. We have a quiet room.
Can I ask, where does the neighbor's house sit?
She's probably about fifteen more feet back, yeah, so she's, that's probably about fifteen to twenty, maybe a little bit more. We spoke into her, she has no problems with it at all.
Always a good idea.
Yep.
We have an undersized lot as well.
Well, this is set back front, I didn't see.
Do you wanna look at this?
It's a twenty-five foot setback.
Do you wanna look at this, so that they know?
Oh, yeah, okay. I thought it still kept it at forty.
Forty's a front. I can see how close this thing is to the lot.
For a side setback, right?
Side setback.
Right. I'm just thinking of the application, I thought it said front setback.
It's, it's non-conforming on the front, which makes it a pre-existing non-conforming structure on the pre-existing non-conforming lot. Which makes this only a special permit in our areas. That's the.
It's always in the words.
I'm gonna go ahead and read the letters again to this. For fifteen Radcliffe, the community development has no comments. Fifteen Radcliffe, the police have no comments. On fifteen Radcliffe, Center Water has no comments. And the fire department has a small novel. Members of the board regarding fifteen Radcliffe Road, this office has reviewed the proposal for an addition at fifteen Radcliffe Road, finds the following. The entire home existing in new construction shall be equipped with life safety systems as required by seven eighty C M R fifteen one, standard for new construction at the time of application for a building permit. The home shall have hardwired interconnected smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors in all required locations. Three copies of the plan that clearly show all required life safety devices shall be submitted to this office as part of the building permit plan review process. This office will approve of this addition with these conditions, and I ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Captain Dan Castoffice, jumps at fire department. And that is all the letters and I have.
So your addition's gonna take, you have a shed back there already?
Yep.
And your addition's gonna go to that shed?
No, the sheds are almost back on the property line, right, yeah.
From the, looking at a deck or on this?
Yeah, that's a pool right there.
So you're gonna have to take, it is gonna all have to be closed though.
Yeah, actually, that's, that's in all the, the pools gone, right. Was an above-ground pool that's been taken out.
Oh, I see, so this should be accessible now. Drive is where, is.
It's gonna be like right at the end of the driveway, right?
So this is what you're doing?
Yeah, that's on, that sheds is along with, yeah.
Okay.
There was a pool that's along with it, that's what you're, so there's no other shed there.
Okay, but you're gonna take this part here, is where you're gonna build?
Yeah, it's. Oh, sorry, I got it.
Yeah, you don't want.
It's bas- basically the patio right there, is where it go in.
Okay.
Exactly, it's almost exactly, so it goes a little bit off the patio. That's where you can use it.
Any further questions at this time? Seeing none, I'm gonna go into the audience. Anyone like to speak in favor or in opposition to this proposal? That was the day.
I can make a motion to close this up here.
Set where he is, he's shooting each other.
Immediately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think we can take this up.
Yep. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve this special permit. Fifteen Radcliffe Road, under one ninety-five dash A E subsection two, for the construction of a thirty by forty-two addition.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Next hearing is a new public hearing. Twenty Herald Street, Lori Crockett, is seeking a special permit under one ninety-five eight E one to construct a second floor addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and a nine by five addition to the front of the structure, which will further increase the non-conformity on the front setback.
Good evening, I'm Lori Crockett, I'm an architect, and I'm working with Al and Margie Frecker, homeowners of twenty Herald Street. We're requesting relief under section one ninety-five eight E one. The house is, is a one-story ranch, and it was built in nineteen sixty-two, and the family room addition, which is this, was added in nineteen eighty-six. The house lot is just over half an acre. The existing house does not comply with the required front or left side setback, which is common, actually, on many of the houses on Herald Street. And the addition also exceeds the thirty percent increase allowed. We're proposing a second-story addition over the original house, and a one-story front-entry vestibular, which is right here. The second-story addition will allow for an additional bedroom and bathroom, and this will provide the owners with more room to enjoy their children and their grandchildren. The front vestibular will provide protection from the weather for the homeowners, and define the front entry and complement the two-story house. They have lived in the house for forty-eight years. They enjoy their property and their neighborhood. They're sensitive to the appearance of their home and take pride in care, and it's upbeat. We believe the addition will enhance the character of the house and complement the Herald Street neighborhood.
Thank you. Do, do we need to consider the thirty percent with the second floor?
So as we got briefly into discussion at our last meeting, we're looking at the determination of, of the increase in the thirty percent. And we're, we're now interpreting it, as long as you're not increasing beyond the actual footprint of the building, and you're going up an exact level, you know, an additional foot, front, rear, going up, we're not considering that part of the increase.
Okay.
Because you're not expanding.
So the increase in this case would just be the.
The small addition, right. See, you're not increasing that non-conformity on the setback.
You're not increasing the footprint of the property, okay. Makes it a little more streamlined.
So really, all we have to worry about is the best of it.
It is.
Yeah, it's gonna still need to be a grand improvement. Right, you.
Thank you. I think with the two-story, it needs something, and it also just kinda needs to give a focus to the entrance to the house for them. And it'll be nice, instead of entering the room in the cold, because it's not a huge living room, it'll be nice for them, them as well.
It's a kickoff event.
Yep.
This looks like a mud ground. If it's enclosed, it's not in cash.
It's like, it's, it's, it's.
It'll be, yeah, nine by five.
Yes.
That's a big porch.
Nine feet wide, five, five feet towards the street.
We'll just have stuff going up to it, and then.
So, oh, the, I guess the, the, kind of look like a little setback in the picture, yeah.
A little overhang for rain.
Okay, I'm gonna read the letters in. Regarding twenty Herald Street, Lori Crockett. The police have no comments. Twenty Herald Street, Center Water has no comments. And that is that, except for the fire department. Dear members of the board regarding twenty Herald Street, this office has reviewed the proposal for an addition at twenty Herald Street, and finds the following. The entire home existing in new construction shall be equipped with life safety systems as required by seven eighty C M R fifty-one, standard for new construction at the time of application for a building permit. The home shall have hardwired interconnected smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors in all required locations. Three copies of the plans that clearly show all required life safety devices shall be submitted to this office as part of the building permit plan review process. This office will approve of this addition with these conditions, and I ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Captain Dan Castoffice, jumps at fire department. And that is all of my notes. Are there any comments or concerns from anyone in the audience this evening regarding this application? Seeing none, if I could get a motion to close the public hearing?
A motion to close the public hearing.
A second?
Second by the answer, all in favor? I think we can take this up. Without concern for the second floor, I, I find it to be just a minor improvement.
A motion that we approve one oh three Willis Drive's special permit to construct the front balcony, I'm sorry, twenty Herald Street, sorry, special permit for the, the new front conforming, right?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you kindly.
Good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna go with, my turn's gonna be enjoy.
Enjoy the construction.
No, enjoy your vacation.
Next public hearing is one oh three Willis Drive, Thomas Susi, looking for a special permit to construct a new side deck and front balcony to a non-conforming structure. Structure, lot area, lot frontage, which will now increase the non-conformity on the front setback requirement. One ninety-five A E two.
Do you remember this gentleman? He was here about two years ago, and couldn't get a stamp on the survey, and this has taken this long for him to get a survey done. And he found some new information, I'll let you take the, I just wanted everybody to remember you.
Thank you, Colin. I'm Tom Susi, and I live at one oh three Willis Drive, and I'd like to thank you for approving my.
I was all motioning, I was all motioning, I had not approved.
Then he said, you should just get up and walk out right now. Yeah, I was here two years ago. And the board, the board didn't have an issue with what I was, what I was trying to do, the board had an issue with. Being compliant with. I had a mortgage plot plan that I came in here with, and they weren't satisfied with that. So they, they requested that I get an instrument survey and get a surveyor. And get, and get a board of appeals plan, get a, get the right plan. Yep. So I've done that, and I think you probably should have copies, I don't know if you're doing it or not. So I'm proposing to put that deck across the front, a four-foot deck across the front and down the side. Now, your property consists of lots four oh three and four oh four? It consists of lots four oh five and four oh two as well? It consists of lot four oh three, four oh four, and four oh five. Four oh three, four oh four, okay.
Which was news to you.
So you have one, you have one house covering.
Those were the camps back in the day that they used to sell, little tiny camps on the water.
These are sixteen hundred square foot lots. Yep.
It's literally right on the water.
You can buy them for like five dollars a month or something.
Yeah, it was crazy.
You can buy that lot, and that was good, you paid five dollars a month for a period of time, and you owned the lot.
And then the ice company came through, and they, and went out of business, and they did a taking, so these, this was really hard to, to get. All those deeds over there worked, I mean, we brought it up.
That's probably where your problem originated. Well, that's, well, that, that's what hap- that's what happened, I ended up, I actually ended up purchasing another lot from the town, town-owned lot, the town-owned lot, four oh.
Five?
Five.
Three.
No, three.
Four oh three, so I purchased a lot, four oh three. It was good that you did, because you're, half your house is on. That's right, and that's, and that's exactly, because not only did the, did the board, the board helped me, in respect, the board helped me by, by hiring a surveyor and finding all this out now, so this is now all straightened out. So that now that, you know, I don't know how many ticks of the heart I have left, but I know that, you know, when I do, my kids won't have to deal with this issue now, it's been taken care of. No, it's, it's nice to know.
I'm always just wondering, how old is the house?
The house, uh. Was built in, I wanna say eighteen, eighteen, in the eighteen sixties. Abortion of it. It's been totally, it's been totally renovated. I renovated it back in two thousand and sixteen. So it's been totally renovated, and I've been waiting to put the deck on, I put three sliding doors in the front. Three glass sliders in the front.
Eighteen eighty-two, Charlie.
Eighteen eighty-two, yeah. It used to be old Leo, Leo Clermont's house. I don't know if you guys know Leo? They used to ice fish, they ice fish right, right in front of the house. He was a, he was a nice old guy. From, I didn't know him, but from what I'm told, everybody used to go ice fishing there, said he was a great guy. So I purchased it off his son. All right. They can leave the notices, I don't think we have a lot of questions here. It's obviously. We can change this dramatically to add a four-foot. Only have two letters. I only have one other one.
I'm afraid, and there's no house on four oh five or four oh two, it's all eight, it's all. Well, you own four oh five.
Four oh five, uh, yeah, four, four oh five, four oh four.
Four oh three.
We're not, no. Well, they only have shown here, four oh one and four oh two are still town property, they're not occupied. Yeah, four, I own lot four oh three, four oh four, and four oh five.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Thirty-six hundred feet maybe, total? Sixteen is, well, sixteen, sixteen fifty times three, right? In that, in that. In that, in that area, yeah. It's four.
Are you planning to jump on the lower level, the first level, right, not the second level?
Well, it's, uh, it's the main level. The ba- the basement is,
Okay.
the basement is, is my lower level, yeah. It's kind of a funky, it's, it's kind of a funky, uh, setup there, so it's a, it's a walkout in the front, almost.
Cause there's the.
There's the red hills.
Cause the hill, that's.
So you're gonna be able to walk out under it.
And that's where the deck is gonna go off the basement per se. Well, just above, just above the basement, so, so basically it's.
Yeah, like between the two.
It's built, the house is built into a hill, let's say, so the grade is higher in the back, and everything slopes down towards the street, towards the lake. So the front of my house is facing the water. Right. So the deck is gonna go on the main level of the house, and it's only maybe, the basement is, I think, six feet, six feet eight.
Here, look at this picture. Deck's going here.
Exactly.
Your deck's going here. And you're gonna be able to walk out under it.
The deck's going here.
Exactly, the deck, right now, when, when you see these two, there's three glass sliders in there now.
Okay.
Okay, and I got the ledger board right here now, so you're gonna walk, you're gonna walk out underneath the step in the lower level, which is the basement. Yep. And it's gonna come back into here, back into here. Right, right. Yeah, I don't think the, the eleven foot is somewhat, uh, immaterial, because we're going back, uh, twenty-six more feet or something. Right. To the edge of your property, like a lot four oh five. Right. So truly the ten-foot setback, which. Uh, so I will read the letters. I have a, uh, letter from Community Development for one oh three Willis Drive with no comments. I have a letter for one oh three Willis Drive for the police with no comments. I have a letter with no comments from fire prevention. Yay, with no comments.
Except.
Aren't your X's in front of it? He was even happy to write the X's, wasn't he?
Yes, he was.
Okay. Do you want to ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or opposition to this?
You can speak favor, I'm with you.
I thought maybe I'm with you. That being said, I am taking motion to close the public hearing. Jackie, a second?
Yeah.
Nancy? On favor?
Aye.
Definitely.
So while ten feet is, is a tight number, um, you've got a forty-eight hundred square foot lot and an area that is, it's, uh, it's, it's tight. The whole Willis Drive in that region is, is a tricky one.
And it's really gonna improve the, uh, neighborhood, if you, if you went by now and looked at it, it's really nice, come out nice. Uh, that old front hill is, uh, plants and grass, and, uh, I've actually got an approval from conservation to do a, a nice retaining wall in the front, uh, at some point. So I'm saving money slowly to build this.
Yeah, yeah. Little at a time.
Yeah, a little bit slow, yeah. Well, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve a special permit to construct a new side deck at one oh three Willis Drive.
I'll second the motion.
Second, on favor?
Okay.
Good luck with it.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy.
I'm by anytime.
You're gonna come by and ice fish?
Yeah. You're welcome.
Be a little nervous now, I don't know what the, the ice is doing, all this weather change.
It's making a lot of noise, like I said.
Yeah, it is. It's a great sound though, isn't it?
It's nice, it's, uh, yeah, they're out there, they're out there skating every day, they're ice fishing every day, it's, uh, really nice. You get the best of both worlds, yeah. In the summertime, I'm fishing, I have a little, uh, in my little boat, my little electric motor.
Very quiet.
We're here, you said, during time?
Yes.
I think we can hear it before we adjourn.
Okay, you're the chairman.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Charlie, on favor?
Aye.